I'm still screwed down, okay?
Welcome to tonight's meeting. The Pledge of Allegiance for the United States of America. And to your Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in this world, with everything and justice for all.
You can come home with any rights. Just one person. Yeah, should have been home.
Excuse me, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting. I'd like to introduce our board members. Steven Valenti, Orv Zuzza, Vicky Springs, excuse me, Vicky, Jeff Briggs, Pete Theo, excuse me, Don Heckelman, and Lawrence Howard. Thank you very much for all coming. Okay, going by the agenda tonight, my first item on was, this is our senior, Mr. Lanley. I don't believe they're showing. Did we hear anything? Thank you very much, guys. Okay, the next item we're going to is the Rensselaar Plateau Alliance SUP extension for... For the community forest. Okay, I won't be voting on this.
Is there an application for this thing?
Thank you, sir.
It's an old one.
You're choosing yourself. Okay. Uh, in everyone's packet, there should have been a letter from D E C in reference to the question that was posed regarding the foot bridges that were constructed.
Anybody that's on the Rensselaar County Plateau that's on the D E C? Just curious, wondering if you know about that.
What can I say again?
I just wanted to, just curious about the, the letter.
It's, okay, did you get it? It should have...
You have it on your packet, Lawrence. I'm a little slow. I got it.
And there's also photos with that. Give you all a chance to review it.
So if you're, um...
Okay, questions opened up? Lawrence?
Well, I just think it's funny that if you're a non-for-profit organization, it's okay to break the rules, it seems like, but if you were making money and you're a corporation, they nail you to the cross, D E C. That's what it kind of sounds like to me here.
Not quite. Uh... We each, each of our views, but not quite.
As a nonprofit organization, the trust created for the properties are open to all the property. The Rensselaar Plateau has also worked with the D E C for many years. That sounds like... You're not making a profit.
Do you have a question for me? Trin is here to answer any questions that Trin had, Lawrence.
Well, I just, I don't have any questions.
I have a few. Jim, how'd you guys get the property six years ago?
We bought it.
From whose money? Why? I'm just curious.
Hold on, please. Let me finish.
How did you get it?
Bought it.
Bought it from who?
Bought it from Townman Industries.
And do you know how long they had owned the property?
No.
I think it was roughly forty years. They had been assessed for like three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for forty years and around eight thousand dollars a year in taxes since you bought it. How much taxes have you guys paid? Do you know?
I don't know exactly.
Because remember, when you first applied, you had told the public and told the town that you guys would pay full taxes on the property. And that kind of leaned towards the vote approving the SUP. And I'm curious, I'm curious how much you've paid since then? Because I know that had changed.
Well, I think what we said was we would continue to pay property taxes on the property. And...
Hmm, I was at the meeting. I asked the question. And the answer was that you paid full property taxes. And that's how you gained support from the community was that you would still continue to put money into the pot of the town. But since then, have you continued to do so and do you continue to do so?
We, we continue to say, uh, pay minimum taxes, but...
What, what does that mean?
It's a pilot. From, is that from Rensselaar County? Is that...
No, that's a, that's a voluntary payment we're making to the town to cover the, the full amount of what would have been the town's portion of the taxes.
Which is some...
I don't know.
You don't?
Okay.
I think before we vote on this, we should have that information. And that is how you gain support for the program.
They haven't made, I don't know what the amount is, but they have been making annual payments to the town.
Is it equal to what it used to be? I mean, Townland paid over a quarter million dollars in taxes while they owned it. And that's a significant source of income to the town. Now, not all of it goes to the town. Obviously, some of it goes to the schools.
Rensselaar County and school.
But it essentially comes out of the coffers of the town because what they don't make up, if it's not the full amount, April Park School District, and the town has to come up with something. Correct?
Yes.
I understand it's not a, you'll never see that line item anywhere. But the fact of the matter is, the town takes a certain amount of dollars to operate as due, as this is a school, and if there isn't enough, taxes get levied. I think the board should have that information before we vote.
Yeah, that's my question. So, I was here two months ago. You had the opportunity to ask that question then. Now I'm back with everything that you asked for two months ago.
I, it didn't occur to me at the time. I would have asked at last meeting because you guys weren't here. Um, it's just, not mandatory, it's just something that had really occurred to me. I mean, like I said, Townland had paid over a quarter million dollars in taxes in the time they owned the property. And nothing's changed. Same property.
I guess that my question would just be, when your guys are doing all these improvements, why aren't we being notified? Like the parking lot at the Barber Falls. Like, there's a, a parking lot there that wasn't there before when the town owned it. So how was that done? Why wasn't any of that even brought up to the town? I don't, I don't have a comment of you guys making the improvements because it makes it better. I just like, those are the things that make me feel like I don't want to give you an extended length of time because I'm afraid that if I do that, your guys are going to do whatever you darn well please, and then there's no accountability for the Rensselaar Plateau.
Okay, so your question was, what do we do when we build that parking lot? So I don't think that that's relevant to this conversation, but I'll answer it. Before we built the parking lot, we actually reached out, talked to all the neighbors. We had a series of meetings with the neighbors and the community to get their input on what we should do. We went to the building, the code enforcement officer, we got a driveway permit to put that in, and we also talked to the county. And we had, uh, slight distances done, and the county weighed in on how that, that approach to the road should be built. So we did reach out to the town through the proper channels, going through the building, the highway, whoever it was, whoever we needed to get that permit from. And we did engage the community and reach out to the town, for the community.
I just think any improvements like the bridges or anything, we, the planning board, or, and the town should be somehow notified, whether it's an email or something, just so that we're aware of what you guys are doing. I don't think that's a lot to ask, um, with regards to, uh, with regards to anything. Because I know if I want to do anything on my property, I have to notify the town. I have to get a permit. I have to do all these things. And I just think that it should be a fair situation for everybody.
That can be put in as a condition for the SUP extension. This is not an infinite extension. This is a finite extension. Let's put that, that as a condition. You just notify any changes. Is that asking too much?
Well, the only thing I'd say...
No, we're talking to the community forest, not talking to our, our forest.
Yeah, the, um, we, we would be happy to, to notify the town for anything that we would do that would, that a, another landowner would, would be required to notify the town of, for sure. I think we would, we, we should do that going forward for anything, but, um...
That's all I'm asking.
I don't know if we should, should be half the, if it's something that doesn't, you know, amount to that, I, it's...
We're not asking for any, I mean, we go a minor step here.
No.
We're just asking for basic information, was it changes, reconstruction of the bridge or changing the trails, anything basic. That, that's all we're asking for. I'm not trying to manipulate.
Yeah.
It doesn't do a good thing.
Yeah.
Just because like, if you do seven, you know, seven, eight miles of trails and you're cutting down trees, you're just, you know, that's disturbance of land. And in, in my realm, I would have to come to the planning board to say, I'm moving over an acre of land, disturbing over an acre of land, and have to get a special use permit. And I just think that if I...
I'd get a SWIFT.
A SWIFT.
SWIFT.
I wouldn't. But it's just the fact that if I have to do that, I think that the Rensselaar County Plateau should have to do that. That's all.
That's fair.
I, I don't think that's a lot to ask. Go ahead, what do you want?
Harold.
Sorry.
Sorry, here's the beginning of the discussion. About the bridges, are the bridges thought to be substandard?
No, it's just that...
No, no, the bridges weren't substandard. There was just a question of disturbance of the streams underneath, and, uh, D E C felt that D E C should, should review and say, which they did. And they came back to a copy of the letter that, uh, D E C sent back on that.
Yeah, if, if I had a stream that was D E C monitored and I decided to build something in, and one of my neighbors tattletaled on me, I'd have, I'd have the D E C at my rear end and probably levied against my house, okay? But I don't want, because it's the Rensselaar Plateau, to be able to get away with things. I want to make sure that they're doing the same thing I have to do. That's why I asked for the D E C letter. Because I know the shoe hearts have to have it. You know, I know the venue people have to have it. So I just want to make sure we're playing all by the same rules.
I've been with D E C for years.
Right. Right. You were an evil corporation.
Well, you made millions off it.
Yes, I could tell by the way.
All right, Trin, so, will you include the condition of notifying the board of any major changes and changes that present, all those acceptable?
Yeah, I, I'd say so.
Thank you very much.
The only, I, I, yes, I know, uh, the only thing I'll say is that we, yeah, yes, we can do that. I want to be sure, we own a lot of different properties and the different towns want different things, we need to track them. And it's perfectly reasonable, so we, yes, we would.
Would you just ask me for communication back in four days? That's all we're asking for.
That way somebody...
Put you against the wall, would you just ask me for communication back?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
What are we thinking of as major?
New trails?
Anything, yeah, new trails.
New trails?
Anything that disturbs an acre, all the same rules and laws that I have to deal with.
We haven't disturbed...
So I'll, I'll say that the trails don't, we, we...
I know.
Only never taken down a tree to build a trail.
I know. I'm just saying in future use, in future, in future, right? Because this land hopefully will be there long before, long, when my kids are in their thirties and they want to take a trail. All I'm saying is, anything that happens moving forward that would cause the same type of requirements for a land owner should be enforced on anybody. That's all. I'm just trying to be fair.
Right, so I just want to be clear. If we're building a new trail, then we don't need to inform the town because that's not something a landowner would have to do. We're not taking down any trees. All we're doing is putting up some trail.
Correct. I don't have any interest in anything that you're doing on your property like that. I really don't. I just, if you're going to build a bridge over a D E C, that's something I think we should know about before you start doing it so that we are aware of it happening. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I don't want to be surprised.
This particular bridge is over a class C stream, which is not a regulated stream.
As long as that's, but all I heard was a bridge went over a stream. And I know we were all freaking out when we were, when, what's-her-name's husband was talking about home of rocks near his creek. So I just want to make sure that we're being fair.
If there were two streams, two bridges, one, one bridge was the one that drew the most attention from D E C. All right, other comments from the board and the members of the board?
I'm sticking by what I said. I think the board should know what, what, if anything, this has cost the town in taxes. Because we were expressly told that full taxes we paid on this parcel. And as this is an SUP, um, it's not something that immediately gets granted. We had to have approval over it, and that was, that was the deciding factor of something. It certainly was for a lot of the community. So, I don't think it's outrageous for a nonprofit to...
Full town property taxes, I believe is what they were, and so they would take care of it. Paying, having, uh, no school taxes.
No school taxes?
No.
I just paid a lot of money in school taxes. And it was pretty expressed that all taxes would be paid. That's all. I don't know how the rest of the board did. It's, uh...
Why not build a little bit of my house if I don't pay my school taxes? I know you don't have any kids coming. Anyways, if that's...
Okay, so what we can do is this. Can you postpone the vote one month? In the meantime, I'll get the numbers that, um, that have been paid, and I'll have that information for next month. And I'll also try and dig back through the minutes, going back to when this original SUP was put forth and see what I can find on that, to bring that forward. All right. Other members, comments?
Uh, what's the current expiration date of the current SUP?
It's now, it's five.
Let me just dig in the next...
Temporary extension.
Okay.
I presume, I propose that we do a temporary extension until, uh, cover to December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two. Much good as time to get the information, get back and discuss it next month, November.
Make a motion?
I am, it's November thirty-second. I'm sorry, I put in forth a motion that we temporarily postpone the, on the five-year SUP and instead go with a temporary extension until December thirty-one of twenty-twenty-two for the Rensselaar Plateau Association operating the community forest on the top of Legan Boll Road. Do I have a first?
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Okay, November thirty-second.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All right, all those in favor of the temporary extension?
Five.
Okay. That was five, zero, one. Two, I'm sorry, six, zero, one. My bad math, excuse me. Okay, thank you very much, Travis.
That's the meeting is November first?
No, November, yeah, November first. Thank you very much, because election day is the eighth. So, November first is the meeting. November first is our, our next planning board meeting. So I'll be digging out that information and we'll have it through the board by then.
All right.
Okay?
November first.
Other comments or questions?
Well, I have one more request. Could you please share those minutes with me, if I were to look at me?
Yes, of course. Okay. Well, thank you. Other questions?
Thanks. No?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. Carol, could you use a copy of the letter? Okay, uh, everyone's received a copy of the minutes and, members have graciously gone through it. Any other last-minute revisions or changes to the minutes of our September sixth, twenty-twenty-two meeting?
Just before we get into that, how long do we leave Allen for, Dave, Mark? Is he, is he just waiting to hear back from someone, or?
My, okay, I first, I went and talked to him and I asked him to have an engineer, and he said he would do it. I thought he was...
Oh, he's, he's still back, okay.
That's, that's where I'm coming from, Stephen. Giving a gentleman time to respond, but it doesn't work. This should drive you the last time around. Unless I get from, oh!
He's probably getting ready to go to Florida, isn't he?
Not now.
What's, what's...
Not now.
What's important, Stephen?
Lots of water.
He's used to water.
Okay, but actually, it's a service, it's always there. Okay, if you get back, just take the minutes. Any other questions or revisions? Okay, so do I have a, do I have a motion to accept the minutes of our September sixth, twenty-twenty-two meeting? Steven, thank you. Don, seconded.
So I just have a question for Lawrence. Did, uh, did you ever get a chance to talk to Nancy's, uh...
I did. I spoke to Catherine Dell, um, I don't know, a week, ten days after our last meeting. Uh, we discussed, she doesn't think that she needs to be here for site plan review. We discussed that. I disagreed with her and I explained that that's Tracy Church's call and this board doesn't overrule him anyway. Uh, and then, uh, we exchanged another email related to that, uh, which I forwarded to the chair, which you can share if you want. She had suggested it was a home occupation. I sent her the definition of a home occupation, what she's suggesting. And again, it's Tracy Church's call. I suggested there's no way it could fit into that definition of a home occupation. It's, there's words that, despite common sense, there's words in the definition to make that.
Is Tracy's call any of the site plan review?
It is Tracy's call to designate what the use is and based on what the use is determines based on the code whether it needs site plan review. So basically, anything commercial needs site plan review. So any use that he chose would force him to site plan review. Her most recent discussion with Tracy, I spoke to him today, they spoke to each other, I didn't speak to the attorney, uh, was her suggesting that because there were no permanent structures, it didn't need site plan review. Site plan review is for the use of the property and that whether or not you need a structure or not, it does not dictate whether or not it's subject to site plan review. Once you've designated a certain use, structures, no structures, temporary structures, it's the use of the property that is subject to your review and approval. So that's where it stands. Uh, I did expect to see Catherine Dell this evening, but, I mean, she didn't tell me she was coming, but I had expected at this point that she would show up. So I don't know what's, where they stand right now.
Okay, I was just curious, I know you were going to reach out to her and see what was happening.
Yeah, I was thinking about putting together a formal letter, but after discussing whether it wasn't necessary.
No, that's fine, I guess.
But there was communication up until today. I think she was talking to Tracy, so...
Make a motion. Yes, who's there? Okay. Take a vote on accepting the minutes that was submitted. All in favor?
Uh, actually.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Yes, abstaining. He wasn't, he wasn't... Thank you, Stephen. Okay, old business? I've heard nothing from Mr. Pasal. Uh, maybe you benefited the doubt, maybe you've been generous, but that's why it was left open. Uh, new business?
Yes.
Before we get one up, Jeff and I went to the, uh, to a site visit for Shoe Hearts, for the, uh, D E C, and, uh, the feds came out to look at the EBS. And they seemed to be, uh, okay with what was there, and they were amenable to having the, uh, wetland, uh, relocation to, towards the front of the lot and things. So they were still in discussion on what they were going to do, but they seemed, seemed to be, at least moving. Uh, they still got quite a bit to do yet. Anything, anything more you saw, Joe?
Yeah, no, they, they looked at, at the three alternatives for crossing the wetland and chose the one that was shortest, and, uh, they're going to, uh, submit a mitigation plan for the area that they're impacting. Uh, so that permitting is going on, and they just have to formalize the details and decide where to put it, what, what it's going to look like, and they have to provide that mitigation plan. But it's, it's, uh, it's permissible, uh, as long as they follow the, the rules. So that can go forward.
And they were basically just asking if they wanted everything all done upfront so they don't do one permit rather than trying to do it piece-meal later on.
So were they reviewing the initial change that they brought to us about a month or two ago? Is that true?
Yeah.
Right, with the current, with the current design and why it's that way?
Right.
Okay.
They've also had, uh, the gentleman came out and, Mr. Norquist, I properly pronounced his name, did come out and did stake the wetlands. They've also, it is, in a survey, they found that they have ten additional feet on the front. The property went a little closer to the trailer property, picked up ten feet there. And, uh, they also, Mr. Norquist, I believe, staked out the building outline where we had put the wood stakes into the granite. Everybody wants to go up and drive through, take a look, see, that door is open for you. And you also see where the boundary went. And you also see where the boundary, wet, wetlands boundaries are clearly delineated now from the stakes that were put in. And uh, they did pick up, as I said, a big surprise, they picked up ten feet into the hedgerow on the front facing into three fifty-five. And I just found out this afternoon. It's a new business, but that's, probably should have put it under all the business. But that's, that's what happened.
One quick question, you were saying they gained ten feet near the trailer?
Okay. Okay, you know where the, the tree line is?
Yeah.
Okay, John threw up that his property was right there at the tree line. Apparently, it's ten feet closer to three fifty-five than he thought on the trees.
So he's, his property line is closer to the trailer than he thought.
Yes.
Is that true?
Tree line is on his property, the tree line is on his property, but apparently it extended ten feet farther than what he thought.
So we could though, had things go forward, we could put some type of requirement in to make sure that that area is properly.
The trees are ma, the trees are maintained, about to say.
Yeah, do you know what I mean? Because now his land goes into that more, the guy's already going to have lights and noise and all those things that he didn't have.
These are, these are all the issues that we can.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's all there is to design.
Right, no, I'm just saying, my question is, so it is closer, I'm just trying to make a mental note when that time comes to make sure we have enough of a cushion not to affect the person who lives in the tree.
They still have the best on board. Yeah, step points first. Okay, new business? I'm not aware of any new development and nobody has come before us as of late. The Russo's are getting their map and survey together and Mr. Fink up on Blue Factory is also getting his revised map to bring back to us, hopefully to be back here in November, uh, to proceed forward. Anybody else here, anything?
May I ask a question?
Please.
Gentlemen, there was an accident Saturday, vitality, where around Blue Factory?
It was on the corner of uh, Blue Factory and Lane was at the barn there.
Okay.
The same.
But again, it's not gonna be on my corner, it's supposed to be up further, past, above the barn.
Not that much.
No? Not that much.
You're still, yeah, you're still, don't pass that one.
In general, it's a crap.
Are we gonna discuss the whole solar panel thing or not, does the rest of the board not care?
Decide versus.
Getting, getting rid of the S U P to have a solar panel in your front yard. Understandably, not every one could work with that, however, to property. Especially in, what is it, R R two? I mean, it was, that was a total quack microphone.
Yeah, but what about minus site? So if, like, are they, do we have boundaries? Do we have, do they have to be fifty feet off of?
As long as they meet whatever setbacks we wanna put on there, I don't think there should be any stipulation on it. Same, the same thing as putting a shed in the property. Same.
And, and it's not in the village, we're talking out in the areas where there is.
Well, you still got a lot of side to choose, but if it meets setbacks, it's none of our business. Especially, you know, it's, the issues I think you have are when you have houses that are close together and then it's like, it's off your neighbor's ass. This is out in the middle of the world, you have, everybody's got five acres and all you have is some, I don't know how, not cruelly say it, you just have neighbors that are just being against each other. It's none of any, it's none of any of your side. Your property, you meet the setback requirements that say, who cares? That's my, my opinion anyway, I mean, she went through five meetings.
But can I take my whole hundred acres and put solar there? That's a solar farm.
No, once, once you get to a certain level, you do, you have to go through a whole different process. What is that?
I can double check that for you.
We, the town, I think the town code has that written out. It's a commercial, that's totally.
Yeah, we're just talking for a residential.
I think the concern in time that they put the law in was just to make, was through looks appearance and uh,
Yeah, just to have some.
To make some restrictions in front. That was.
I get it, but it's R R two.
I, I know that, but there are some things that are already on top of each other on R R two. You have some that are far separated, Stephen, I realize that, but you do have, well, not clusters, but you have homes in row and succession, um, planning.
Okay, so, all right, say they are, you have two, you know, five houses in a row, they're all sitting close together, right? If they meet the setback requirement to put shed there, they don't come before us. So why is it they put a solar panel? I take your hat, that's, I'm not a big fan. Obviously, technology works, it's a joke. However, it's none of our business.
That is your opinion, yes, sir. Which is good.
It's not like people are knocking down the doors.
I understand.
At this point, so putting more on them, why do we discuss it? For three months more, it's worrying, though. Nobody's, I, if I'm coming forward, but we can discuss it.
Any comments from anybody in the public?
I don't wanna look at it, so.
What, what would it do to the property values, the comparables, the property va, I mean, so your neighbors do have a say. If I were to put ten in the front of my house, you would have to look at it 'cause we're directly across the street from each other, she wouldn't be happy. So I could just do it. I guess for me, I, what does it matter what you do on your property? Cause, cause you're stuck looking at it. So I go, my husband's gonna say that. Right. Or do you do what you want? Right, I just.
What about the person that put, I mean, there's always many people that wanna kick each other off. What if you wanna build a shed and you're gonna paint every other panel a different color?
Right.
That happened, there was a big deal about it, it was kinda funny, 'cause some neighbors were like, that's a joke. Um, I don't know. I get it, I don't wanna look at them either, I don't, I'm not a fan.
To me, I don't care, I don't care what I'm looking at. Most of the times, I'm not even looking around because I have to keep my two eyes on the, on the road.
So you don't want somebody over more, more trouble? We, I, well, it's also the first issue, so maybe, I don't know, don't waste our time on it. But if it comes in front of us.
It's going to come in front of you again. It's getting to be more popular now. Mine have got the time to expire.
All right, may I ask that we hold that conversation until November? And I will ask, uh, ask higher-ups in town and Mr. Gilchrist and uh, we'll continue the discussion until November.
If you find out what the, um, the criteria is to get.
I can do that, buddy.
I know it's there, there's like three levels and I came up with it.
Yeah, I think you adopted a separate law, which I don't have, but I have, I wasn't reviewing that. I missed that, but I came in and the approval of that or else I would have had it in my old book right here, I don't.
All right, comprehensive plan, financing is, is coming through, is going to be approved? Or? It's gonna be requested.
What? The only thing that was requested was that G I S mapping, right?
Yes.
The mapping, yeah, that's, that's all set and squared. Yeah, we've got a, a survey sitting out there waiting to go out, uh, which needs to be reproduced and somehow nailed up to the town residents. And uh, we've got a document that's sitting there, three quarters done and, um, needing some assistance to finish it up.
Will we back in front of you?
It means time we, I ask for uh, consideration of a sort of a, some, some sort of a commercial outfit to help us finish it the way we did the original one in two thousand and six. There must be some vendors out there that help with, uh, comprehensive plans. Who could come, a consultant of some sort.
Do we have a recommended budget? Do we have any money?
Well, it was originally put in for ten thousand dollars.
Um, the seminar that we went to last week, they said contact the colleges 'cause sometimes they need to gain a little education in doing things like that and there's kids that would volunteer maybe or do it.
Wait, the hell was, but the.
We were at a point where volunteers had done what they can.
Right, but.
We need professional help to finish it.
Well, Barton and La Judas does it, they were located in Albany. There's a couple others that threw their name out there and then we were doing the training over the summer, so, and we have just names.
Got some names?
Yeah.
Can you give those to the person? To town board? Because I think we only used something like three thousand or ten thousand, so we got six thousand, one.
It'd be nice to get, what would be your budget?
Pardon?
It would be nice to get, that's the, now, our own budget.
Yeah, okay. You got, you got some folks that were at that.
Well, yeah, um, they were the one, they actually sponsored it. Um, they were the ones that were talking about digitalizing everything. And, but they were talking about how they, they helped with comprehensive kids and I'm pretty sure it was Barton and La Judas. But I will look at mine.
Were there any other representatives there from other companies?
Mm-mm.
Okay.
On my calendar to look at.
We need to get three.
You have to do three votes?
Under certain amount and like, with the mapping, you went with, you didn't do anything there, you wanted them because you had used them before, so.
Right. Cause he's got all the, the base maps and everything already, so he doesn't have to generate any of that stuff.
If it's under, if you, if you have it, at this point, when you're saying it's three quarters done, I would assume that then with that company, Vicky's family could look at it and probably get a price and if it's under a certain amount, I think it's twenty thousand, I wanna say. Might be wrong on that one, but I think if it's under twenty, that we don't have to get three.
Okay, I mean, I think somewhere on the old one, the name of the consultant is there.
Oh, right, yeah, he's probably right. Cause there are that, that whole list right from the very beginning, everybody that participated in it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Doctor Palmer said, I'll give you a list of ten of them if you're looking for consultants to do this type of work.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just call my, whatever government service.
Other business, other questions? Any member of the public care to address the board for what they need to say?
I, I guess I have one, you guys, the huge group of public we have here, do you have any questions? Um, we settled our lawsuit, handed it to credit. Yes, no?
We agreed to the settlement, I have not burned back with anything that changed. So it went back to the, the insurance lawyer, the town board agreed to the settlement, the insurance lawyer takes it to whoever other lawyers.
Sure. I guess I've had this conversation with multiple different people. Are we at some point going to have a conversation what might harm the wrong and how to avoid that in the future? Because the problem started here. And I guess regardless of the outcome, whether or not we settled, it's been a dumpster fire for years. And it's caused a lot of stress, it's wasted a lot of time and money. And that problem originated with this board.
What are you telling me, pitch car?
Pitch car. So is the town gonna have a meeting with everybody? Are we gonna have a meeting or we just gonna pretend like this?
Never happens.
Never happened, because.
It was gonna happen.
Like, not saying we're at fault, but the issue started here. And maybe if we had done something differently, we wouldn't be in the situation we're in now. At least that's my opinion, I mean, I know a lot of people, we're missing two attorneys that were, no, three, I think, actually, was Pat here? Tom Selly here? At the time? Or was it just, I, I can't remember who you guys, what?
Jack.
I, I know, I know Jack was here, I thought you, that was like right around the chain, but Jack, Rob's gone. So all that has changed. I believe some people have left the board, planning board, zoning board. But I mean, that's a real issue to put down. And not for nothing, for the past two years, seems like everybody's pretending like it isn't happening and I feel like we should, I don't know, are we need a workshop? I don't know, am I totally out of line? If we have to have an executive session, I just, it's a train wreck. And now you have a whole, you know, small area of the community that, you know, they're, they're not gonna play nice for a long time. And I don't know. I mean, Joe and his neighbors are gonna be.
Go ahead of each other.
Slinging mud for a while.
More than slinging mud. Joe was, yes, several time, by himself, a couple times, couldn't be down, no prior to the initial meetings and to adjust the situation, which he resisted.
It's just, I mean, just the whole thing is a bad situation. You know, I, I think there was a lot of bad communication, no communication. But either way, we're, we're in a mess. Hopefully, it will be behind us, but I mean.
Is the town board looking to rectify its law?
Or it was so intuitive, it's part of the process, nobody wrote it in to the code. If we have anything else.
I guess I'm looking for something a little bit more official, like do we have any sort of guidance from the judge? Like really, what was the problem or, like, I'm, I'm just asking, I don't know, I'm young, I know.
No, Stephen, it's not a case of being young, no, really, but is it, there's, because it's not officially, officially, officially settled.
We can discuss it.
We have to be careful what we say.
That's, that's fine.
That's fine.
But I guess, I was kinda asking.
If at one time, yes.
When it does?
After it's finished.
Does the town board have any plans on doing that or?
When it's completely done.
Okay.
We took a vote on it, but that's only gone so far and it's my feeling, if I don't know this, it's not a lawyer, we could get this back in our lap.
Get this back in your lap.
Well, regardless of, if it's getting appealed, we still.
I, this is my idea, that all of a sudden some disagreements, I mean, there's a lot of lawyers involved in this.
I know, I know.
Guaranteed mess, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
But at some, at some point, the town should change their laws, right? To solve the problem, but, but I.
Or like the public, the whole process was just a disaster, I don't know, I just, I feel like we blundered into it. Maybe, uh.
Well, the town did change.
Right. You changed the, uh.
I'll, never mind, just put that on, so, excellent. Hopefully, hopefully, I can, I can talk freely without.
We just have to wait until we get, until the legal, when the board gets done.
But it is a good point.
I mean, without saying any names, I just, I feel grumblings in our up, upcoming meetings.
It makes me.
Okay, other, other topics?
Oh, gotcha.
No other topics? Okay, uh, we have the schedules for October, November, December, our sheets in front of you. If anybody has any problems, speak up and uh, we can move from there, make the changes if necessary. We thank you very much for your time tonight to, again, any, anybody from the public? No? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn? Seconded? Stephen?
Hey, I'm not gonna say anything offensive tonight.
Okay, and all those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining?
Just Jeff, cause he wasn't here.
Stay home. I already voted.
Seven, six, six, nine. Jeff, just follow me. If you're in a winter mode, I think.
Oh, one of my, one of my head.
And on the other.
That's great, everybody. Everybody gets some.